Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the regular meeting. We're on fire downtown with an order. Today is Monday, it's seven p.m. at six thirty. And we have a little call.
Counselor Deneau?
Here.
Counselor Cooper?
Here.
Counselor Toner?
Here.
Counselor Burnett?
Yes.
Counselor Grinstead? County Counselor Lynch?
Yes.
And Mayor McGee?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't have one. Hold up. I would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on the working gatherer is the traditional unceded territory of the Inuit and Tsarite people. It's a Hocke nation, has lived on these lands a thousand years, long before the arrival of the settlers. And we are grateful to have the opportunity to check this in there, boy. I have the adoption of the agenda.
Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council dated Monday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Second here please. Cooper, Counselor Burnett, all in favor? Thanks for the twenty area interest? None? Any questions from previous counselors, council meetings? No? And so have you adopted minutes previously?
With the minutes of the regular meeting of council listed under item seven A on the agenda be adopted.
I'm ready, second please. Counselor Deneau? Assistant Counselor Lynch, all in favor? Right? And tonight, the ward's delegation presentation for showing that the presentation on Thursday. That fabulous weekend.
Good evening, council. Happy to be here today and talk about Thursday and the event we have around. So, uh, for the background here, Earth Day, kind of our empire historically embraced Earth Day by just creating a kitchen day or kitchen week. This is where residents come together to help clear our community by collecting waste, waste and litter from park spaces, roadside walking trails, et cetera. Uh, so how's Earth Day being recognized this year? We have three events slash campaigns, uh, for twenty twenty-three. Uh, pitching week started today and runs through Saturday, which is Earth Day. Uh, we're also collaborating with the County McNab Brayside Direct Department on Thursday Bike Bingo. And the Rotary Club is doing their Great Lakes Watershed Cleanup that I said I'd be happy to help share some information on. So, uh, pitching week with the cleanup kicks. Uh, from April seventeen through April twenty-two, our community can collect a free park cleanup kit from the Nixon Center. We have one hundred kits available, and I did bring one here as well today. This kit features a waste bay, a leaf bay, a pair of gloves, and a voucher from Ottawa Valley Coffee. They're designed to be used in park spaces, trails, and other public spaces. Uh, after completing your cleanup, you can leave your collection beside a town of our power garbage can or cycling van for collection. Or call the Nixon Center staff for alert or operation staff as to where your collection is. This does have to be in a, uh, Canada Empire Park or the Algonquin Trail space or cemetery. Uh, these kits are made possible by contributions from Pitchin' Canada, uh, Arm Power Home Hardware, and Ottawa Valley Coffee. Our pitching week is also registered with Pitchin' Canada and is available on their website, pitchin.c. The Earth Day Bike Bingo. Some event information here that this stuff, this event is done in partnership with the Township McNab Brayside Direct Department and the Ottawa Valley Cycling and Active Transportation Alliance. This is an event where residents in our community are encouraged to bike to different places on the bingo card, which they are given on the event date to see the benefits of active transportation and increase the awareness of our doc, uh, awareness to the reduction of our carbon footprint. I got the first look at our bike bingo card today and excellent and some very fun and interesting spot to go to on Saturday. Uh, some event information also is the registration takes place at nine thirty a.m. at either Red Pine Bay or Robert Simpson Park. Uh, myself and other staff will be at Robert Simpson while Janine and some rec staff McNab Brayside will be at Red Pine Bay. From there, you'll collect your bingo card, review the cycling rules, and begin your adventure. The event runs from ten a.m. to noon, and you'll participants may drop off their completed cars to the Arm Power Public Library. Those participating have a chance to win a prize. And the library is also going to be making a, uh, a button, sort of just gets a button that they participated in the event, so. And lastly, but not least, the Rotary Club has their Great Lakes Watershed Cleanup. This is an event where thousands of Rotarians and non-Rotarians come together, clean up shoreline and park space. Uh, this is a little different than the council package you ever see. This is a bit of a change since last week. Uh, they're switching gears. This year, the Rotary Club will be cleaning up part of what they grow in partnership with the County of Brentford. Uh, they have an updated poster about where to meet the registration time as well. Uh, and they're working on coordinating with high school doing a park cleanup at Robert Simpson Park. Uh, that's still in the works, and they'll be updating on their website and social media. Uh, staying up to date, uh, we're probably working on analyzing these plans. I don't think I've had, will communicate the details as they become available. And, uh, those are the links to their social media and their website. So where can residents go to find information on these events? All three are listed in the account events calendar, uh, and communicated in the April Recreation Newsletter. Event coordinators' contact information are in all of these event calendar pages, uh, or you can contact the Nixon Center for more information. Any questions?
Any questions?
It was a very encouraging day to see so many, uh, residents come to Nixon Center in the pouring rain to pick up their kit. I hope they wait for the afternoon. They got a lot nicer. Uh, there was quite a few outbursting in the morning, so it was nice to see.
Yeah, any idea how many kits you're expecting for handing down?
Last year, we handed out seventy-five in a year that, uh, this was slower participation in all recreation programs. Uh, we got through ten on a rainy day today, so those ten, uh, those numbers tend to pick up towards the end of the week, so.
Sure, that's great.
So we're hoping the whole hundred are gone. Thank you.
And that presentation we thought part of the evening, public engagement.
I'm gonna take this one. Oh, yeah, so. Uh, so Grandma Ivory would have been here last week to, uh, present this, but unfortunately, he's been on holiday, so, uh, so he has left it, and my people roll hands. There we do. So just so I want to give counsel a little bit of an overview of the park updates and some public engagement that we've been, um, we've been undertaking. As you recall, we submitted a pair of grant applications through the Invest, Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, or ISF, their COVID resilient stream last year, which had a focus on outdoor public spaces, and we called our applications Growing Outdoor Play in Arm Prior, which were aimed at enhancing the play experience at Crusoe Park while adding, uh, a new and accessible playground experience at Legion Park. So the Crusoe Street Park, uh, the play structure there was scheduled for lifecycle replacement at the end of twenty twenty-two. And, uh, so the project to replace it will be completed this year. The park, uh, original play structure has now been removed from the park to allow, uh, us to, um, proceed with the installation of the new park once, uh, once we get to that stage. The project, uh, is included in our capital budget this year at a hundred and twenty thousand with almost sixty thousand coming from the ISF grant, and the other sixteen from, uh, a breakdown of eighty-five percent of our park fund development fund and fifteen percent of our DCs. The, uh, the overview of the site, I'll just go through it quickly for counsel, um, we, uh, if you think about Crusoe Street, sort of running across the top of the plan, um, the plan includes, uh, uh, accessible pathway from the sidewalk of Crusoe Street to the area where the play structure will be, uh, installed. There's a bench, some trees, the existing, um, uh, stand, uh, surface where the, um, swing set is, is still in place. And then what we've done is we've asked our consultants to provide us with a couple of options of what the play structure there could be. And, um, this is what we're asking to feedback on the pub, from the public on. So there are a couple of options of play structures, uh, including different elements, um, that people can, uh, go online and decide, uh, which option they prefer. So just quickly going over them. I see some fairly standard play, uh, play models. You know, option one, there's a sort of a rendering of what the, uh, final product would look like. Option two, again, just another, uh, form of play structure with some different elements for active play. Uh, and again, a bit of a rendering of what that two would look like. The Legion Park, a little different, um, with the installation of Sullivan Rink of Dreams, uh, park has become one of our more prominent place, places in the community. It's such a great central location with a great access. Uh, it's always had a swing set, but it does not have a play structure, although there is one across the street at John Fong III. But the new play structure will sit on a rubber play surface to enhance accessibility and safety while supporting more accessible play features. Again, this project's in our budget this year. This one's at two hundred and fifty thousand with a hundred and, almost a hundred and thirty coming from asset funding and just over a hundred and twenty from seventy percent of the park ground development and thirty percent from DCs. And that it will include smash fault pathways that connect Edie and Wilfred, and I can show you again, if you think across the top of the map is the, um, uh, Edie Street, well, at the bottom, you'll see the link to, uh, Wilfred and then the, the pathway that, that traverses from one side to the other. You can see the Rink of Dreams on the left, and then on the right, you'll see, um, access to the play, uh, pad surface. Now, there is a swing set, uh, in this park, we can, uh, end up losing it based on the location of the new, um, surface area. And we indicated a future swing area to the south. Um, what we're going to do when we tender the project is we're gonna put in it an optional swing set, so we get a price on it. And if it comes back at a very reasonable rate, we'll, we'll be back to council looking for a little bit of additional funding to, uh, allow that to happen at the same time, so that we don't lose that feature for any length of time. Um, so there's just a, a closer version of where the actual play structure will be, uh, on the play pad. And then again, we've got some options. Uh, we've included some very special, um, accessible options with this park. You can see the ramp feature that comes up and has access to different levels and play, play, uh, areas within the park. Uh, within the, the play structure itself, saw the creative, um, uh, play, uh, type, uh, equipment that could go in, sort of some renderings of what, that it could look like. So there's three options. I believe option two doesn't, isn't as accessible as the first two, uh, the first and the third. Uh, but again, a very, um, robust play structure there. See guns. And again, option three with a, a nice ramp feature that, um, allows some accessible play space, uh, on, on the structure itself. Uh, and just some renderings. And option four, uh, similar to option two, a very robust, uh, play structure. I've gone through this fairly quickly, but they are available online if anybody wants to have a look. I'll get to that in a second. Uh, just also wanted to brief counsel on the waterfront trails is another, uh, one of our, uh, major projects this year. In line with our waterfront master plan, as we, uh, begin to put shovel to ground. The pathway improvements along the west side of the Natawaska River is, uh, this year's project included in the budget at eight hundred and one thousand dollars, with fifteen percent DC funding and eighty-five percent surf funding. There will be asphalt pathways and lighting right from Natawaska Boulevard, uh, right down to the stairs at Robert Simpson Park Beach. And, uh, along the way to the, uh, waste and, uh, recycling receptacles and benches and lighting, as I mentioned. So we've just done some renderings of the project so that people can have a peek at what it would look like. It's a one and a half meter wide asphalt pathway. Um, really accessible as far as grading goes. You can see some lighting has been introduced along the pathway, which is new, uh, for the area. And, um, one of the more, um, obvious changes are that you can see along the path is the impact on the Marina and the proposal to keep, um, uh, parking away from the pedestrian traffic there, uh, which is the intent of, of this kind of design. You can see it better on the next one where people can come down towards the waterfront, uh, empty their vehicles to their boats. And then, uh, we see back up to parking the upper area. Uh, again, this is a, just a, a rendering and a concept at this point, but it shows where the, where the actual pathway will be. And, um, we're excited to have a nice, um, clean, uh, path of travel in that area. Around the far side of the Marina, you can see the pathway just continues in basically the location that it is today. Respect to public engagement, the public had, and that will have an opportunity to view the design boards. Uh, and discuss with staff and provide some feedback at the, uh, public open house that was held on March twelfth in the, uh, evening at Nixon Center. We've got a lot of good comments at that, um, at that session. Uh, a lot of comments about the Marina as well that we've, uh, taken into consideration. Um, we will be, um, we have online, uh, review, uh, an ability to review the design and provide feedback through the News and City software. Uh, we provided, uh, some news about that. It's on our website. You can link into it. Um, and it says from April twelfth to the sixteenth, where I actually left it open until this Friday, which is April twenty-first to get feedback. We've had quite a bit of, um, people going in, choosing their preferred option for the parks, providing comments, that kind of thing. Um, and there, there are also copies of it available at the Nixon Center at the town hall if you prefer to come in and have a look at it. Uh, or, and you can also just submit comments to recreation@armpower.ca, uh, through email if you just have comments you wanna, wanna share. But the, uh, the Zen City, um, program is really robust and really interesting. And, uh, we're the first ones in the county to use it, and we thank the county for providing it to us. It's streaming out quite well. I also know that, uh, Lucas attended one of the, uh, primary schools. Which one?
AJ.
AJ Charvino last Friday afternoon and presented the, um, park, uh, options to a class who were really keen and excited about it, and they submitted two classes, or?
Five classes.
Oh, five?
Yeah.
I thought it was one or two. Great. So five classes got to, uh, participate and see it, and they really good feedback from the teachers about how excited the kids were, so that worked out really well, too. So the next step is, uh, again, we're actually giving, uh, till the twenty-first of April to get public feedback, which we will then provide to our consultants to finalize the designs. Um, and then get the, the project tenders out, uh, hopefully, hopefully by the, by the end of April, they'll be, um, up on, on Merx for, um, tendering, we'll reward the contracts by the end of May and get these projects done between June and October of this year. So a fast project turnaround, but, uh, really anxious to get those underway. Um, other park projects in twenty twenty-three, uh, Brian just wanted to make sure council was aware that the access mats will be installed at the beach this June. Those are accessible, um, mats to get, uh, people with mobility issues into the water. The Marina feasibility study, uh, is starting to take shape. The Robinson Park Design, which includes the pedestrian ramp, uh, going to tender, um, have to, we'll work on the art people that to go out. The CN Park, uh, Trail Park Design, the Fairview Park Design, and the Marshall's Bay Meadows Parkland Designs for phases one and two are continuing on from last year. And we should have some, not a public consultation happening on this shortly. And I will try to answer any questions, but, uh, I guess that's great. Questions for William Robin?
The ramp going over the sand, is that what you're talking about, to the water?
The accessibility mat.
Accessibility mat?
Yes.
How would you like to cope with that, with the way the sandy roads and there's so many rocks in that there, is there? Have they planned for that?
It really is a, uh, uh, you know, the, the, the look of it is, it's a, I think it's a wide foam mat, basically, that lays right across the sand. And it really runs from the end of asphalt paving to, to the water just directly across the beach. So it literally allows a, a wheelchair, for example, to roll right up the asphalt onto this pad, straight down the beach and into the water to provide access. It's right across the sand.
It's real close to the water that I'm asking about, you know, the way the sand is washed away with the water?
Yeah.
And there's so many rocks in that, like, it wouldn't be stable. That's all.
I think it goes right in the middle of the beach, though, where there's not, where there's not as much rock, where, uh, I understand what you're concerned is, though, that the, the sand will wash away under the water. I'm not sure what happens after that point, to be honest with you.
Just, just very interesting.
And I know we talked about one of the wheelchairs that, um, that could be used in a situation with the floaty wheels. So they actually roll down and then they float within the water, sort of maddling ruins to be in place from the water, water area across the sand.
Really fantastic. They have, uh, they have these, um, mats in the playgrounds at Walter's Addo, too. So for children to get from the parking lot over to the sand as well, so take a look down there. They, it's amazing how you can wheel across them, so.
Yeah.
It's great.
Just close to the beach, yeah, where I was, you know, practically, because, you know, uh, going down there and over the years, there's a lot of rocks in that. You see some of the kids now running down, and not today, but in the summer in that. And there's large rocks and everything like that. I just wanted to know the wheelchair that ever.
Not sure, but I'm sure Brian will, uh, anything that's going to install us.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah.
I, I had asked Graham, said he was gonna be away, just if you don't mind, I can chair at two questions for him. And the one was about play structure on Crusoe being removed ahead of its, uh, at the design time. There's people concerned about that. And he said that the structure had passed its previous, uh, inspection, but had reached the point of lifestyle, uh, lifecycle replacement. He had to remove the structure while the ground was still firm and not wait for spring thaw to make sure there's no damage, uh, with heavy equipment accessing the space. So that's why it had to go. And then I asked about the rubber surface at Legion Park. It really looked like it had taken up a ton of space on there. But he said, when you look at the actual, uh, overhead design, it's not like the rendering. The rendering really shows everything spread out, but on the actual overhead, it is quite nice. Um, I was also concerned about whether new things could be added to it afterwards, and he said, no, once it's bored, it's done. So we have to decide on what equipment we want in there, because once it's bored, it all has to be pulled up and then put back down. So, um, those are just three questions that I have for him and, and answer them.
Uh, and we don't need all of the wrong before, just a question. Okay. Uh, we don't have any public meetings tonight, uh, the matter table for our business, we'll get that motion, and staff report.
The council received staff report twenty twenty-three dash zero four dash eleven dash zero one entitled, "Request for Municipal Concurrent's Proposed Telecommunications Tower, Rogers Communications, Inc., for the lands municipally known as one fifty-eight B, McGonagall Street West." And the council provide a statement of non-concurrents regarding the installation of the proposed monopole telecommunications tower facility for the reasons outlined in this report and the land use authority recommendation report prepared by Crins, uh, dated October seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Could I move around a second to the next one? Good work, Senator.
This is mine. Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Yeah. And again, it feels a little bit like unfinished business this one, because I think our council, um, has been waiting for this report for quite some time. Um, just for a bit of background, Crins received an application for a communication tower on behalf of the town, uh, from Rogers Communication, Inc., uh, last year at a property, uh, known as one fifty-eight, the McGonagall Street West with access from Edward Street. Rogers proposed a forty-meter flush mount monopole structure with a ground building on the property. As part of the process, Rogers would have to enter an agreement with the property owner. Um, then they did provide some, some sketches and some drawings that are included in the report. The location of the structure is not subject to our town zoning bylaws, as this is a federally regulated process. However, there are aspects of the zoning bylaw and surrounding land uses that are to be considered as part of the processes, process for informing, uh, the approval authority, who is the Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada Organization, I say. Crins, on behalf of the town, uh, has been, uh, our communication, um, agency, I guess, since two thousand and fifteen. We utilize their services as the designated representative of the Town of Arm Power to manage the process of all of our radio communications applications within our jurisdiction. Crins reviews the applications and completes the required public notification process on our behalf. In absence of the arrangement with Crins, the federal process requires the municipal planner for complete the process. Whereas with Crins, there's still a land use authority role for us, but the majority of the workload and technical reviews carried out by Crins on our behalf. Um, and they have additional telecommunication expertise. As I mentioned, this is a federal process, and the land authority, land use authority, town's role is not an approval role, but rather assistance with facilitating the public consultation and providing information input to the process. As part of Crins' review of an application on behalf of the town, the Land Use Authority Recommendation Report is prepared for submission to the applicant, in this case Rogers, which is then provided to the, um, I said, the equal authority in support of their application filings. For council's information, a draft copy of that report has been attached to this report. And the, my report also includes some information on the process, um, Crins provides. Well, I'll skip down to the public consultation part, part, because I know the council had received, um, a delegation, uh, last year from landowners in the area who had some serious concerns with the, uh, with the proposal. So the purpose of the consultation is, uh, with the public is to explain the nature of the radio communication site, describe what the site will look like, and to answer questions and concerns from the public about, uh, aspects of the site, such as access routes, noise, delays caused during construction, lighting and painting of the structure, and often to address health concerns over electromagnetic energy exposure. Um, the public consultation process included, including survey results is summarized on pages fourteen to eighteen of the, uh, draft Crins' report. I'll give you an excerpt that provides a summary in that the public comments on the site primarily specify concerns around visual, the visual and amenity and the impact of the tower on the downtown area of Arm Power. Other comments were received regarding health and safety worries from the electromagnetic emissions of a tower. Other comments also, uh, expressed concerns around the velocity of the health, Canada's safety code number six. As a general summary, there is, was considerable public opposition to the proposal, I think it's fair to say. Additional comments received from the mayor and from several residents highlighting the, highlighted the concerns, uh, from environmental contaminants that may be present on the site. And that this resulted in a further review of this aspect of the proposal, and that will be included in the submission, uh, in Crins' report. Finally, as a recommendation, following a peer review of the report drafted by Crins to be signed, sorry, the review of the report drafted by Crins to be signed off by a municipal planner for the federal legislative process, staff recommend that council provide a statement of non-concurrents to be included as scheduled due to the final report. This is a fairly standard process that councils either provide a statement of conference or non-conference as, as part of the submission, uh, and that goes then, then back to Rogers. It's filed with their submission to the ministry. I think that, um, you know, Crins' and, and our discussions with Rogers have made it very clear that our concerns with this project moving forward at this location. Uh, but that's, that's our part of the process at this point, and, um, I'm happy to, and answer any questions, council may have.
And, uh, Lynch?
One other question, thank you. We're, the tower, the fire department cannot be used by Rogers, it's a wrong type. It's a telecommunications for fire only in public address. So if they're, we're going to go there, they have to take it down, but for all the dangers of Rogers can go there, I'm true.
Now, um, we in all favor in terms of the recommendations, that way?
Yes, please.
Those, um, the options that we, like, uh, that, right, we, by state of the law, so all in favor of that? So much. Um, okay, next up, we have, uh, we've been a particular tender.
The council enacted bylaws to award the tandem plow truck purchase tender number PW twenty twenty-three dash zero one to Freightliner North Bay for a total of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars plus HST, and award the three-quarter ton truck purchase tender number PW twenty twenty-three dash zero two to Donnelly Automotive Group for a total of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars plus HST, and award the purchase of one skid steer loader tender number PW twenty twenty-three dash zero four to JR Brison Limited for a total of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars plus HST, and authorize CAO to execute the agreements and related documents with Freightliner North Bay, Donnelly Automotive Group, and JR Brison Limited respectfully, oh, respectively, to supply and deliver the vehicles and equipment. And further, that cost overages from the three-quarter ton truck and skid steer loader tenders be funded from the capital surplus arising from the tandem plow truck tender.
That would move right in fact, you're on a. Counselor Deneau? Um, Counselor Toner?
Uh, hello, Ms. Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear from me tonight. Uh, today, when we talk about three tenders, as Murray has outlined them, uh, these three, uh, pieces of equipment are part of twenty twenty-three capital prod, capital budget as approved by council in February of this year. Um, we publish each of these independently on merx.com on March second, and bids close on March thirtieth. Um, the tandem plow truck purchase, uh, we had one bidder, Freightliner North Bay, uh, that was two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand plus HST. Um, and for those counting, uh, we did buy a very similar tandem plow truck last year, uh, for two hundred and fifty-five thousand. So we are seeing a twelve point five percent increase on a very similar, not identical vehicle, but very similar vehicle. Uh, and that's a freight liner, one oh eight S E with a Viking plow attachment. For the three-quarter ton recreation pickup truck, uh, with plow, we received two bids, uh, from one to market for at eighty-six thousand, and one from Donnelly Automotive Group at seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars plus tax. So that's our low bid, uh, for a Ford F two fifty with Fisher, uh, deep plow, so, which was, was it full in the middle, lifts up, very practical for our versus recreation. Uh, and for our skid steer loader with Lail Mower, I received four bids. So Battlefield came in a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, Green Tech John Deere at a hundred and forty thousand, B and T McFarlane at a hundred and sixty-three thousand, and a low bid with JR Brison Equipment Limited at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars. That's for a Case ER two seven. That's for a Case ER two seventy B with bomb light, flail and mower, the four foot mower on a long arm. Um they were minor irregularities uh with with these items. So the tandem plow truck, we expect for eighteen hundred cool cranking batteries. Uh we got three three thousand cool cranking batteries, which is perfectly fine. We wanted to lever start, we got a push button start. Uh we wanted heated windshield wipers, we got not heated. Um and biggest thing is they were not able to meet our delivery deadline of one year for a purchase order. Um we did buy a ten plow truck last year from the same supplier. Uh we would have given them the purchase order in March of last year, we're expecting delivery of that plow truck either late next week, early this week or early next week. So it takes just over a year for a custom plow truck of this size. Um and that's fairly typical of the industry at the moment where they will not guarantee a date still with the COVID supply chain issues. Uh with three-quarter ton recreation truck, uh we had requested a factory spray-in bed liner. Uh and he did contain a local aftermarket bed liner. Um maybe not as robust, but apparently that would, if we went with a factory spray-in bed liner, would be waiting longer for a truck. Um and towing capacity of fifteen thousand pounds is what we expect. We got the towing capacity of twelve thousand nine hundred pounds, which for recreation is fine for capacity. And uh again, they're not able to meet our delivery deadline of again, one year for a purchase order. It's really hard to say uh whether they'll come in within that year. It took last year when we bought pickup trucks, it took six months to get two of our pickup trucks, so the van took a whole year. So it depends which factory they come out of and where the supply chain shortages are. Uh with the skid steer loader with flail mower, uh we had specified a uh minimum top speed of thirteen and a half kilometers an hour on track. Uh they came in with a speed of twelve point nine kilometers an hour, not a huge difference. We wanted high and low LED lights, we got uh standard single set of uh halogen lights. And inch and height we expect was a hundred and twenty-eight inches, we had a hundred and twenty-five inches, so it just would be three inches lower. Yeah, all of these are not a huge deal and it still allows me all the things we wanted to do with. The so overall, in our considerations, the uh ten plow truck, we had a first we had a budget of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We came in at three hundred and four thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents, including that HST. So we're under budget by thirty-five thousand, it was wonderful. Uh the three-quarter ton truck, we had a budgeted sixty-eight thousand and we came in at seventy-five thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars twenty cents. So a deficit of seven thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars twenty cents. And it's your load loader with flail mower. They budgeted a hundred and seventeen thousand and came in at a hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars eight cents with a deficit of thirteen thousand. So overall, for our major procurement for this year, we really have these three items. Uh with the total overall within the five hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh which is uh and with our spending of five hundred and ten thousand twenty-four dollars and seventeen cents, we are fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars eighty-three cents under budget overall on our large ticket procurement for equipment to give. Are there any questions? Oh, sorry, council has the option to uh not award one, two, or all of these uh projects.
Good work, I'm saving fifteen thousand dollars. Thank you.
So our options are the word one, I'm glad you're in, that being yeah. Or all of them. Simple, all in favor of that one?
The council enacted a bylaw to enter into an agreement with Chantel and Sean Mallard for a community improvement grant, a financial incentive under the Business Location Expansion and Startup Program, an application and fee and permit fees rebate program for fifty-five John Street North in an amount of up to five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to be funded from the CIP grants operating account.
Um you have an application for fifty-five John Street more. Um so the proposed location is currently a one-story bungalow and they're looking to convert the house to a commercial ice cream shop. Um and the total project cost is thirty-three, just over thirty-three thousand dollars. Um so they're proposing to at the front of the house, a serving area and where uh they try to get them in purchase ice cream and eat in there. And then the backend is where they're actually going to be making um the ice cream because they do also distribute it to other local um stores to sell or other businesses that they partner with, and there are also vendors that are a member of our as well. And so they they do make quite a bit more than they plan on selling as a shop. So uh the general eligibility criteria, they have met all of the requirements, we're in good standing with the town, it's located within the downtown area. Um they haven't already gotten a CIP grant and um they are in compliance with open end zoning. Um so we will be making sure that they meet um any building number and building permits, they will need to submit for a building permit, but you're not able to do so prior to applying for the CIP, so we will be making sure they undertake it with uh building permits. Um the changes that this CIP program is not, uh sorry, this application is not uh referencing any exterior changes to the property, and they may come forward further on once they work on the exterior, but uh at this point, they don't have a lot of plans to do anything to the exterior other than to add commercial signage, their money's going into the inside. And and once the construction's complete, we'll be making sure it's consistent with the application prior to issuing in great time. And the total command grant of rebates does not exceed the total for project cost. And so the first one they're applying for is the Business Location Expansion and Startup Program. This was um created to be able to assist new businesses or existing businesses in expanding or locating to the town of Armbar. So this is a home-based business located outside of the town of Armbar that has purchased a building and moving their business and extending it significantly um within the town. Um they are within the downtown areas, they are are eligible, and the grant is fifty percent of total total project cost up to five thousand dollars. Um so they must uh specific criteria for this is they must relocate or expand within twelve months of the grant being approved. Um they must have moved and paid all of their associated expenses as well as operated for twelve months in that location before they're actually given the grant funding. Um and they're required to be a rear year-round operation, not simultaneously. So although it will be an ice cream store, they do provide um and sell ice cream year-round. They're also looking to apply for the application and permit fees rebate program. And so as I mentioned, they will need a building permit for the plans for the inside. And they do need the zoning, so they do overturn new planning permit at this time, so this covers um fifty percent of the cost of those permanent fees because those seem somewhere to be a barrier for businesses looking to open as well. They're in the downtown and this covers fifty percent of the total application piece up to five thousand dollars. And so they've met all those general eligibility criterias. Um so the total project cost that they're eligible for, um the eligible costs mainly have to do with utility hookups, there's quite a bit of um electrical work that needs to be done in order to accommodate the machinery that they they need. And that makes up a majority of this cost uh is just over sixteen thousand dollars. And the estimated building permit cost will be three hundred dollars, which means they're eligible for the full full five thousand under the business expansion and a hundred and fifty rebate on building permit cost. And so the new community group plan that was passed last year is meant to um see the vision of Armbar being a vibrant and complete community, they've changed it small town store term while offering residents exceptional services and offering food to be accessible to all. And this also supports the attraction of new businesses, which is important to the economic success of the town and is part of our strategic plan as the priority. Um there's currently fifteen thousand dollars of uncommitted funds in our twenty twenty-three CIP grants. Um and if this is approved, uh there will be nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars remaining. The recommendation is that council approves this project um under the CIP for a grant of five thousand one hundred and fifty to be funded for fifty-five John Street. Are there any questions?
Just a comment or a mayor's and it's a house, it's gonna be a business, it's an employment. All bonus for downtown, I got an ice cream.
And twenty twenty-two, twenty-five multi-year.
The council approved the town of Armbar twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five multi-year accessibility plan as a planning tool to be used to inform the annual budget process as well as other financial planning processes and documents. And further that the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five multi-year accessibility plan be posted on the town website.
Perfect, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm before council today presenting on the accessibility plan. Uh so just a little bit of background, as council's aware, the province of Ontario passed the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act back in two thousand and five, uh which sets out the accessibility requirements for all public and private sector entities in the in the province. Uh it was an extension of the existing legislation, the Accessibility for Ontarians Act from two thousand and one, um but extended accessibility requirements to both public and private institutions, subject to some size uh regulation. Under the act, it establishes the IASR or the Integrated Accessibility Standards Regulation, uh which the regulation itself was adopted in twenty eleven, uh which sets five standards for all entities to meet, uh being customer service, information and communication, employment, transportation, and design of public spaces. Uh it also includes some general requirements for all entities, including a legislative requirement for an accessibility plan that is reviewed at least once in every five-year period. So in the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act or AODA, uh it establishes an end vision or an end goal uh to increase accessibility in all public and private spaces by twenty twenty-five. And as you can see on the screen here from the latest accessibility plan from the province of Ontario, uh the desire as we get into the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three area near the end of the plan uh is for final adoption in all of the standard areas. So as council is aware, council adopted the last multi-year accessibility plan in twenty eighteen. Uh at that time, the town remained in compliance with all standards under the AODA and uh accessibility regulation. Uh since that time, the town uh has completed a number of additional goals that were listed in that plan. And I'm pleased to report forty-seven percent have been completed with thirty-one percent scheduled. So these are projects that have been identified and funding has been allocated either in the long-term uh capital forecast uh or in one of our other planning documents. And then there are twenty-two percent of items that are ongoing. These are items that are either within the current uh fiscal year uh that are ongoing projects or items that require uh follow-up from year to year. But just some key projects that the town has completed over the last five-year plan. Uh back in twenty twenty-one, the town launched the new accessible website uh which continues to meet accessibility requirements uh to the level required under uh the regulation. Uh we've also adopted new online building permit application software and payment options through our website for parking tickets, pet registrations, and other similar licenses. Uh council adopted an accessible signage and wayfinding policy in twenty twenty, which continues to be implemented across the town. And as council is aware, we've increased built space accessibility in our public spaces at Robertsonson Park, the Marina, the Next Smith Center parking lot, which was completed last year, and a number of road reconstruction projects across the town. Uh one thing that I do want to highlight on this slide here, those uh picnic tables uh from the photo uh at the top on the right uh is from the Cultural Night Market, uh which allowed the town to purchase accessible picnic tables, which will continue to be used across the community. And in the bottom left-hand corner uh through through a grant through Jump Start, the town obtained a number of sledge hockey equipments uh which will continue to be used as well, uh increasing accessibility on our ice surfaces at the Next Smith Center. So before council tonight is the proposed accessibility plan for the next, in this case, two years uh from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. Uh the plan maintains compliance with all of the required uh legislation and regulations under the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act. It's proposed to be a two-year length. This aligns with the twenty twenty-five mandate uh for the original compliance date uh with all standards. It's also important to note, the province of Ontario has not announced what its plans are uh following the twenty twenty-five compliance date. Uh so staff will continue to monitor uh and update and bring forward in twenty twenty-five uh what the next update would look like. Uh the report itself provides an update on the accessibility improvements from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three. And then it does also list a number of further goals above and beyond, uh which we've included in the last of our two multi-year plans uh where we've incorporated feedback from our accessibility advisory committee when they've completed tours of our town facilities, as well as feedback from town staff. So I'll speak a little bit more on this section here, um because it's certainly one of the areas where we as the town are working even harder to make sure that we increase accessibility uh beyond the legislative requirements. So we do more than we have to according to the province, because we know that it's important to ensure access to all of our public spaces. Um so as council is aware, in this case, uh as I included in the report, the accessibility advisory committee completed tours of a number of our public spaces from the Next Smith Center to our community parks back in May of twenty twenty-two. Uh these tours were wonderful uh opportunities to receive feedback on how in particular we can increase physical accessibility in our sites. Uh in addition, over the course of last year, we did have feedback from a number of other staff members, and we did conduct a review of similar accessibility plans from other municipalities to identify best practices. Uh so I'll just highlight a few that are in in the plan, uh the ones uh that I will note. Uh so we have included uh completing minor facility upgrades, including those color contrast strips. We realize over time they will get damaged and they need to be replaced. So we've included this rather than identifying it for every individual building, we've included it as an overall goal for all of our sites, uh both new and uh placing them where they still need to go. Uh we have also included from uh a training session that members of staff, council, and the public had last year from the dementia society, an increased focus there to make sure that we're incorporating best practices in terms of high visibility uh and ensuring that we avoid bold uh color patterns and such uh in any of our new design. Uh we've also included some public awareness uh opportunities, both for members of the public as well as local business community members, uh including making sure that they uh understand and know about our CIP programs, in particular around accessibility, as well as making sure that they're aware of regulations around service animals and some other accessibility considerations. Uh the other one that I will mention, taking a look in particular at some of the feedback we've received from our accessibility committee, uh they had noted in particular um the accessibility of Arena A. That is a project that's ongoing and our recreation director is looking at uh as we look forward to the renovations of our arenas in the next few years. Uh and in addition, at the museum, uh the new addition here is making the shared parking lot between the museum and library more accessible by regrading it. That is a project that will be scheduled in the long-term capital forecast uh in the future. So it is something that we got directly from our tours and we've made sure to include it here as well as in our long-term planning. A little bit on financial considerations, at this time, there's no direct financial implication to adopting the multi-year accessibility plan. Operating expenses uh have been built into our operating plan uh when it comes to minor training or minor capital items, and they're approved annually through the operating budget. The capital investments uh are made in line with the long-range capital forecast. More uh all of them have already been included in the long-range capital forecast, and in particular, those that have been scheduled uh from our last plan. Uh and many of them have also been included in some of our long-term planning. Uh, and many of them have also been included in some of our long-term planning documents when it comes to the waterfront master plan. And the ongoing parks and recreation master plan. So the recommendation here, uh, that the clerk read out just a moment ago, is that council adopt the multi-year accessibility plan. And that it be used as a tool to inform the annual budget process and our other financial planning processes over the coming years. And in accordance with the act that we posted on the town's website. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that council might have. So from a, from a town perspective, of course, there, there are opportunities throughout the town. Uh, we do also have the municipal parking lot located behind Shoppers Drug Mart and the Indian Food Restaurant, which is a great place for individuals who are able to. Uh, to walk to their destination, in particular at the library, uh, or the museum. But it of, of course, something that staff can continue to look at moving forward.
The council proclaiming April twenty second, twenty twenty three is Earth Day in the town of Armpry. And whereas Earth Day is celebrated on April twenty second each year. And is a key time to unite our community and make a positive impact on the environment. And whereas the theme for Earth Day twenty twenty three is Invest in Our Planet. And is focused on engaging governments, institutions, businesses. And the more than one billion citizens who participate annually in Earth Day to do their part. Everyone accounted for, everyone accountable. And whereas Earth Day is known as the movement to change the business climate, political climate and how we take action on climate change. And whereas climate change is being observed and experienced at an increasingly local level and needs to be taken seriously. And whereas local levels of government are finding themselves at the front line of the battle against climate change. And whereas the mounting environmental challenges that we are facing will require our towns and cities. To take a leading role in the fight for more sustainable world. And whereas the town of Armpry will be providing park cleanup kits to local residents to use in local parks during the week of April seventeenth to twenty second. Twenty twenty three, and the town will co-host an Earth Day Bike Bingo event on April twenty second with Town McNabry Side. And the Ottawa Valley Cycling and Active Transportation Alliance. And whereas the Rotary Club of Armpry will be hosting Great Lakes Watershed Cleanup on Earth Day. And therefore, the town of Armpry hereby proclaims April twenty second, twenty twenty three is Earth Day in the town of Armpry. Encourage all residents to participate in your Earth Day activities. Learn more and understand their role in helping to combat climate change and make a positive impact on the environment on Earth Day and every day.
And we've got another possibility.
We do, and, and unfortunately, we were, um, this meeting is a week later, but. We are going to proclaim April ninth to fifteenth, twenty twenty three is nine one one dispatcher appreciation week in the town of Armpry. And whereas this week and every week is a time to show our appreciation. And to recognize that our health, safety and wellbeing are often dependent on the commitment and steadfast devotion of nine one one. Emergency service dispatchers, because emergencies can occur at any time. That requires police, fire, ambulance or other critical services intervention. And whereas when an emergency occurs, prompt response of law enforcement. Firefighters and medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, paramedics and firefighters is dependent upon the quality. And accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone nine one one. And whereas nine one one dispatchers from the O P P Rentford Central Ambulance Communication Center. And the Brockville Fire Department are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. These dedicated men and women are first responders and they are professionals who use public safety telecommunications. To quickly respond to emergency calls. And whereas each dispatcher and their support staff exhibit compassion, understanding and professionalism. During their performance of their job assisting those in need. Therefore, the town of Armpry hereby proclaims April ninth to fifteenth, twenty twenty three and every week. It's nine one one dispatcher appreciation week in the town of Armpry. Encourage all residents to reflect on the important role that nine one one dispatchers play to ensure the safety of local residents and their families.
For someone that was involved with a phone system years ago. Calling at the fire department where an individual had the phone, every individual, then we went to a pager system. And then finally to the nine one one system. And, uh, it's, it's, it's just phenomenal. It's fast and it's very, very fast. Well appreciated.
Okay, did you report and? Couple of ribbon cutting since last council meeting, first one with that Paul Property on John Street, also attended by. Uh, while journey as a community member in our prior has been exciting to follow. And a very true in town in every possible way, and I'm sure that we all continue to cheer her on. Uh, both events were very well attended and had some. Uh, had my second open house in the office, uh, a couple of weekends, so much quieter than the first one. Uh, concerns that I heard were, uh, mostly regarding snow removal, uh, priorities. You want to thank Oliver for being there and for being quick to provide if not. Uh, with my bookstore, had a thirtieth anniversary and, uh, pleased to be there, it was all attended. And, uh, when you know Cooper there as well. Congrats to Lisa Otten, the president of the chamber, I met with, um, Lisa, the new secretary. Last week I had a call from McNabry Side, council member Scott Broom. We had a very warm and friendly chat and, um, in the end I advised that our party council. Um, I've made the decision that we had and one that we felt was the best. For our residents, nobody cares, but, uh, for our, uh, but McNabry Side is what's lost. Sporting, um, in the same team, I felt very much, and we've reached out, but he's human. And I reiterate, get counsel's decision. Um, I also had a terrific rapport with, um, uh, Migo Beck from the R H. We, it was the first chance that I could sit down one on one with you, so it was very, uh, very much getting to know you. Last weekend, I attended, uh, open house at, uh, one of your buildings. Where they saw over two hundred and fifty people go through their building. Uh, it's also fun to speak to the Armpry McNabry Side archive at their E T M on the weekend, including some town council. And I'm glad to remember the three great years and it's good to see our archive through that. Many other community members, but also great market finding sessions, so we're fine. And last week, um, morning also, you might recall that council supported, um, an initiative that Eric Burton brought forward. For council's support, the part of grant petition he was bringing forward. And, um, uh, I pleased to say that they received the grant and there are some more exciting things ahead and I don't want to give it all away. Uh, but our first gonna be one of three communities that, you know, company are undertaking research and recommendations. In Alberta, right? I think so. Or in Ontario. Anyway, we are one of three. Um, and, uh, when it goes abroad now, we're, we're, we're very hopeful that a call meeting will take place with the chamber or economic development officer. And myself, and then he will come and sit down with whatever. Uh, next up is, I've got.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it should be long-winded, sort of. As a result of the presentation by Ms. Joanne Brooks on end violence against women and a resolution was passed by county council. Then the county rent group was committed to engaging with community partners to educate and support our residents about the seriousness and long-term danger. Of violence in our community. Based on this statistics, four thousand eight hundred and fifteen crisis calls. And service provision to five hundred and twenty seven women and children in our local community. The council for the county rent group declares intimate partner violence, I P V. An epidemic as per recommendation, number one, event from county caring recommendations. Number two, a resolution was passed, even with our neighbor township of McNabry Side, the county concerned with something camp will drive from Osborne Street to Highway seventeen. On the road, grass onization policy affected the time of the request and further the staff feedback report for Oster. Unlike, R and B had our seven hundred thousand log for intersection, so we're not going back. The resolution was passing with regularly with advertising signs and devices within the county road lot, so. When you're driving on county road now, and you can see mom and pop sign missing, you don't know why. A resolution was passed approving the county rent group portion of this, uh, submitted by the McIntosh Perry Consulting and Near Limited Kirk. For the professional services transportation master plan, note this will be done within two years. The resolution was passed effective January one, twenty twenty three, all non-union staff with the exception of students, rate of pay will increase by two percent. The sixth dose of COVID is now available by booking, uh, call one six three three nine four three thirty nine hundred. And the earliest booking is twenty second April to Tinburn Community Hall. There is a community economic development workshop, Wednesday, May third, nine o'clock till twelve at the Cotton Legion. That place is now changed from the agricultural center, it's now the Legion. Those in registration is twenty six April. The Arm, and here's my French, the Armpry Equal Catholic. School is eager to spread the word that they are excited to finally be able to welcome students for the next school year starting August twenty twenty three. The cashman area for the school includes Rentru, Hackenham and many other small communities in Rentru County, South September. The Ontario East Municipal Conference will be held in Ottawa this year from September sixth to eighth, twenty twenty three. At the Ottawa Conference and Event Center and Fort Yard Marriott Hotel, not in Kingston. And the Ottawa Valley Tourism Conference and Annual Junior Meeting schedule were Tuesday, April twenty fifth of Maple Haas and Park the Lake. The county completed a recent, uh. Check the law stores, plan of subdivision. And a demonstration on how the newly acquired Zen City. And assist the public engagement for the plan of subdivision application. Certainly means for new subdivision point four, it'll be on Zen City, there'll be no more public meetings per se. The county spent twenty three million dollars of in capital projects last year with our fire receiving seven hundred and seventy thousand. County request for proposals, F R Ps have started using electronic bidding. Which is new. And follow up on the mayor, yes, I attended the union, yes, I was at Baron Bird Book, but I wasn't in a rush.
Committee reports and minutes.
But the airport commission, uh, met April thirteenth at six thirty, there were several discussions that could place over the course of the meeting. Uh, the airport is undertaking a big contract that will be up for renewal next year. And any time they will be moving the current contract, posting the market rates of these land, which will add additional revenues for the airport. Please agreement similarly will be undertaking updates to ensure the airport's perspective for ancillary costs involving hangar deals. The Airport Agricultural Society will be hosting their Valley Agricultural Festival at the airport on the fourth, fifth and the sixth. But I'm assuming they will be coming, so we'll probably provide more information on that. Discussions on a possible garage extension were commenced to town's accessibility equipment. This is a long-term conversation, however, commencement of said discussion did occur. Airport management update included finalizing and settling contracts, vintage planes will be participating in training sessions at the airport. The hydro and gas consumption by the commission is fifty percent as, uh, it was this time last year. The airport is soliciting for line painting at a favorable rate. And the airport bank account was changed and it will net additional interest revenue for the airport. Airport will also commence reopening its website. Lastly, the flying breakfast is occurring June seventeenth. Airport Commission encourages residents, councils and visitors to come join in seeing vintage aviation. Enjoy a snack and take in this community asset that is the airport. It's my airport mission report.
Oh, Mrs. Mayor.
Yes, oh, go ahead, Count the better.
Thank you. I have to use my flashlight because I can't get up to turn the light on, so. Sorry, sorry. Uh, on Saturday, I attended my first, um, my first archive board meeting. Uh, we had a welcome and, uh, followed by, um, Mayor Lisa McGee gave her lovely. Remarks, uh, at the annual general, uh, general meeting. Uh, the minutes of the last annual general meeting, which was, uh, Zoom in May twenty twenty two, they were approved. As well as the treasurer's report, and this year our approval of the twenty twenty three board of directors is as follows. Uh, president is Irene Robillard. Vice President Brian Gilhooly, Secretary Sarah McKenzie. Treasurer Brian Gilhooly. Town of Armpry representative is myself, Chris Tonner, Township of McNab Brayside, Laurie Hodinot. Uh, Women's Institute Representative Anita Schubrink. Member at large, Ed Murphy, and second member at large, our museum curator Emily Stowe. After there was a cake cutting, uh, picture taking, and then there was the archives in the attic, which, uh, there were a few. Uh, I left at two o'clock, but at that time, there were, there were a few, um, four, uh, four archives that were being. Um, assessed by volunteers, so. It was a excellent, excellent day and it was nice to see, uh, a long time president or long time council. uh a longtime president or longtime council member Ted Strike was in attendance and uh it was anyway, it was nice to see him again. So that's it for me, and I will follow up and send the minutes when I get them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the committee of adjustments. The Armbar Committee of Adjustments spent on the evening called April to consider committee appointments. As a result, Mary Chong was elected chair by members Ted Strike, Proudly Samuels, Corin Lamb, Dan Lynch. One minor marriage was approved for a graduate on judge.
That the correspondence package number I dash twenty-three dash April dash zero seven be received as information and filed accordingly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Page thirty-six, the Ontario government is expanding the investing in women future program to attend additional locations across the province to help women more experience social and economic barriers to connect to supports and develop skills they need in financial security independence. One such place is called the Resource Center, including so it's close. Page forty-eight, good news for the residents of Ontario, starting in twenty twenty-three, the Ontario government is investing additional thirty-three million over three years to add another one hundred undergraduate medical student seats and another hundred fifty-four postgraduate medical trainees being prioritized for Ontario residents, so we gotta get them in medical. Yes. It was wrong. Page fifty-three, all news of your Ontario government is increasing the minimum wage to sixteen fifty-five an hour over first twenty twenty-three. Of note, the students under eighteen eighteen work eight twenty-eight hours, will be fifteen sixty. What's what's noteworthy is if you're a hunter, fisherman, or wilderness guide, it's eighty-two eighty-five a day or a hundred and sixty-five seventy-five per day, you work five hours or more that day. On page one hundred and five, at the medium twenty-fourth uh for March, the AMO board affirmed it's a recommendation for the ministry of municipal affairs and housing to strengthen our code of conduct. That pertains to us. Recommendations diminished included upon municipal codes that tend to account for workplace safety and harassment, creating a flexible administrative penalty regime that could be adapted with local economic financial circumstances of municipalities. Increasing training of municipal integrity commissioners to enhance consistency of investigations and recommendations across the province. Allowing municipalities to apply to a member of the judiciary to remove a city member if recommended through the report of the municipal integrity commissioner. And allow stage for if a member removed through application to a judge from running for election in the next term, in which he is removed for a huge group in this subsequent term of office. And lastly is uh page one twelve, application for twenty twenty-three inclusive community grants are open till April twentieth. Until it's a Thursday. Municipal other organizations can apply to sixty thousand dollars to help older colors and ladies and people at this place to participate in community life. There's three priorities which are one of the reading. So I've already approached the CEO to say, are we aware of these projects, and it could be applied for some.
Yeah, we are definitely looking at um to go on our waterbound trail projects, um assuming those are a bit with one of those priorities, yes.
I just do want to highlight that the on page twenty-three, they're saying development of the provincial government has announced the new investment tax credit for manufacturers. You trap additional investment in the province and the economy to restore Ontario budget. Feature the new Ontario-made manufacturing investment tax credit. Help local manufacturing grow, innovate, become more competitive, and create jobs. This relief comes in the form of a ten percent refundable corporate tax credit of two million dollars a year for Canadian-controlled private corporations on qualifying investments in buildings, machinery, and equipment for use in manufacturing or processing in the province. Qualifying expenditures would be for certain properties such as CCA class one buildings or CCA class fifty-three machinery, equipment, manufacturing process.
That the correspondence package A dash twenty-three dash April dash zero six be received that the recommendations outlined be brought forward for council's consideration. That the following bylaws being or hereby enacted and passed, bylaw number seven three seven four dash twenty-three authorize the CIP agreement for fifty-five John Street North. Bylaw number seven three seven five dash twenty-three, award tender number P W twenty twenty-three dash zero one for a tandem plow purchase. Bylaw number seven three seven six dash twenty-three, award tender number P W twenty twenty-three dash zero two for a three-quarter ton truck purchase. And bylaw number seven three seven seven dash twenty-three, award tender number P W twenty twenty-three skid steer loader with flare flare mower purchase. Um first thing, the request for support, Women's Sexual Assault Center of Rentford County. Um that the council of the corporation of the town of Armbar received the correspondence from the Women's Sexual Assault Center of Rentford County. And whereas the Women's Sexual Assault Center of our county is working on a status of women Canada project, creating a role model for female survivors of sexual abuse assault with the hope of sharing this model across Canada. And whereas one of the components of the completed model will be a yearly campaign entitled We Stand With Survivors, with this being the fifth annual event. Therefore, be it resolved, the council agrees to hang the We Stand With Survivors banner for the month of May twenty twenty-three in the municipality. And further, the council direct the C E O to work with town staff to find the most suitable location to hang the banner, and further that this resolution be forwarded to the status project coordinator of the Women's Sexual Assault Center, Rentford County. The council of the corporation of the town of Armbar received the correspondence from the Armbar Regional Health Foundation. And whereas the Armbar Regional Health Foundation has included a community update as a water bill in certain previous years to reach all local homes, share updates on their programming, and provide an opportunity for local residents to give back to healthcare in a meaningful way. Further, that council approves the request from the Armbar Regional Health Foundation to include a letter from the foundation in the July, August twenty twenty-three utility bill mailing to be delivered to homes in early September at no cost to the foundation.
Super. Set one, um Dr. Stining Dool has tickets still on sale. Uh it's taking place on Thursday, June eighth from five thirty to eight thirty at the Smith Center. Wonderful event in support of Physicians Recruitment Committee. Uh it is fifty-five dollars a person, and you can find information through the Physician Recruitment Center or contacting Julie at three four three five nine seven six five three zero. I expect we're gonna have staff and and council in attendance there. I know a lot of uh bigger groups are starting to book their tables now, so get in it before the tickets are gone. It's all doctors and their culinary partners steaming up to compete for the best appetizer, so there'll be music, silence, and live auctions, appetizers, and some refreshments. And that's it. That's gonna be bye.
Thank you, Mayor, and so many gave back to the hospital in their fundraising. Their heart is doing the golf tournament in June twentieth, I think. At the Mount of Oscar Golf Course, and the Armbar Hospital Foundation is doing a deep water. But you could take us on now. And thank you, Armbar friends, for hosting the hot dogs.
It's blue this year. See, it's blue, it looks nice.
Got the opening on the top, and my wife just pushed her hair.
We we can have a hairbrush.
I just wanted that the cultural night market committee planning meetup occurred on April fifth at six P M. Uh discussion on an event that was likely to weather, because it was going to occur in town, and this is going to be a group are determined to make the event better than ever. Uh if you would like to participate, the next meeting is Thursday, April twentieth at six P M at the Armbar Museum. And if you're unable to make it, please contact Julie, our manager of culture and theory, we're at the museum.
Oh, and uh so we have one closed session matter.
The council meeting closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine two B to discuss two personal matters about identifiable individuals, including municipal or local board employees, regards to staffing.